I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of City Falls Church on Monday, November 25, 2013. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can have the roll call?
Ms. Berry is absent. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalin?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Tarter is absent. Mayor Baruch?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please? Mr. Kalin?
I move to adopt.
If I can get a second?
Second.
That was Vice Mayor Snyder on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? As have, the meeting agenda is adopted. We have one proclamation this evening that I'm very happy to present. Whereas the first permanent settlement of Jamestown, Virginia, held a Thanksgiving in the year of 1610, and whereas the annual practice of giving thanks was first observed in the United States as a religious celebration that has evolved as a civic tradition, and whereas the City of Falls Church is fortunate to have citizenry that is dedicated to community involvement through church, civic, humanitarian, scouting, business, and government volunteer services, and whereas the creation of the City of Falls Church was initiated by a volunteer group of citizens, whereas these individuals are motivated to serve for the greater good of the City of Falls Church and mankind, whereas volunteer activities in Falls Church include city -- actually, I'm going to skip this part because I'm afraid that the proclamation may not list everything. So with that disclaimer, I'll go through them, but if it's not in there, I apologize ahead of time, because I think that there's more groups than what may be listed here. Citywide cleanups to improve the look of the community, invasive plant removals in the park to promote a healthy parkland and habitat, planting trees to shade paved streets and reduce greenhouse gases, educating the public in promoting energy efficiencies and sustainability, mentoring youth, supporting local businesses to increase economic development, helping abused or homeless individuals recover and become self-sufficient and independent, providing scholarship and grants for students, promoting all aspects of the arts, charitable causes such as providing guide dogs for the blind, and working to create polio -- eradicate polio through the world, humanitarian aid, providing a winter homeless shelter, funding additional programs for city schools, amongst other, and the list goes on and on. Whereas city residents take great pride in their active involvement with local government and serve on 23 city boards and commissions and 12 regional commissions, whereas there would be no community without volunteers to add that human component to local government by raising their voices, lending a hand, and providing comfort and cheer to fellow citizens, whereas the City of Falls Church offers its thanks and gratitude during this time of Thanksgiving, remembrance, to each other of our hundreds of volunteers by declaring a day of appreciation. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim the day before Thanksgiving, November 27, 2013, is Volunteer Appreciation Day in the City of Falls Church, and hope that each member of the Falls Church community who volunteers their time, serves others, will receive a heartfelt thank you of the City Council. So, thank you to all of our volunteers, and I'm going to open it up to council members to say a few words before we hear from staff and others as well. Council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Someone the other week summed it up pretty well. There wouldn't be a City of Falls Church without the volunteers. So I think that pretty much says it all, and I look forward, hopefully later on, we can call everybody up and get a good photograph of everybody that's here to commemorate it. But we have a lot to be thankful for, and I think the City owes each and every one of our volunteers a great debt of gratitude, and thank you.
Other council members? I just wanted to echo what Vice Mayor Snyder just said. I think our volunteers throughout the city, whether it's boards and commissions, or other civic organizations, or individuals acting in their own capacities to really help the city, or the cornerstones of the city. And every time, for example, when I look at the candidates that come up for our boards and commissions, I'm absolutely amazed and stunned with the amount of talent that we have in the city, that people are willing to give of their own time, their family's time, to serve on these boards and commissions outside of their daily activities. It's tremendous. I think we really couldn't have made it through the recession and the economic downturn without the help of our volunteers, and their work continues, and I just can't say how much we appreciate all the work that's done by all of our volunteers throughout the city. So thank you, on behalf of the City and the City Council. So at this point, given the number of people, I wasn't sure if there was going to be a person who's actually receiving the proclamation.
As you know, we have hundreds of volunteers in the city, and so we thought it was a really nice idea to recognize them this year at the Thanksgiving time. We had a picnic last year for them. We thought this might be a different idea to -- just to recognize their efforts.
Thank you. And why don't we take a photo with the volunteers that are here? So. Come on.
Don't be bashful.
Don't be bashful.
to all our volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kathy, for supplying those, and if you see us eating cookies, you'll know why, from the diets. That was a disclaimer by Councilmember Duncan. All right. We're on to the swearing-in of any new boards and commission members. Okay? And I'm being told that we don't have anybody being sworn in. We are on to receipt of public comments, and I have a couple speaker slips that are not on the agenda. The first speaker slip that I have is Mr. John Owen Horowitz.
I speak to the Council. I'm here on behalf of the Easter Seals Child Health Center. We opened on Monday, and we're very excited about that, and we wanted to come and share that with the Council, and maybe watching our TV, and really take a moment to thank you for your support and the support of the City employees.
That enabled us to open on time so that the school district can take over the site that we were using on North Cherry Street. And given that we have just recognized volunteers, I do want to really take a moment to introduce Tina Thomas, who's here tonight, and has been mobilizing the volunteer community in Falls Church to get involved in the new center. It's something that is very important as we continue to grow and develop the relationship that we've been building with the city over the last year to grow this center. We're very excited about it. You mentioned in your remarks the energy efficient and green initiatives. That's something that's very near and dear to us, and for those of you who have been by the new building, you might have noticed the solar panels on the roof. It's a very exciting initiative for us. And I also want to have Linda Genulis, who's our Vice President of Children's Services, come up and speak for just a couple of minutes about some of the unique programming aspects that are special for the children of Falls Church and Northern Virginia.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you from the children and the families. I think as we look, as we enter this new building, and looking at children for their journey of lifelong learning, we are in a safe and secure environment. We have a building that is not only state-of-the-art for age-appropriate activities and curriculum for children, but we're looking at their health, we're looking at the safety, we're looking at them ready to contribute to society, and through early intervention efforts, we are able to provide more services for children with special needs in an inclusionary environment. We're also providing care for children of wounded warriors, as well as the children within the community. So this center has really become a family center, and without your help, and without the collaboration of children being first, this center would never happen. So in behalf of Easter Seals, and Child Services, and the children who attend, and future children who are going to attend, we say thank you.
And now, we did just want to provide some special recognition, really to thank all of you, as well as a number of city employees who went above and beyond the call of duty to enable us to move really quickly. It was a fantastic example of public-private partnership, and a great example of the way a city can pull together to make an important project happen on a very expedited timeline. I think when we started, nobody believed that we could get done as quickly, and we really couldn't have without the support of the city. So we wanted to take a moment to thank you, and we have a few plaques. One, actually, for the City Council, so if I can, I guess, come up and present it?
Please. I don't think the City Council has been presented a plaque before, so.
So this is really to the City Council for thanks for your support in helping us get this center together. We have a couple plaques for a few of the employees who have really, as I said, gone above and beyond to enable this project to come to completion on an expedited timeline. First Wyatt, this is City Manager. And Jim Snyder in the -- And Lauren Bruce, also in the Development Department. And then from our builder, Monarch Construction, representing them, we have Matt Gagrowall. So, thank you, Matt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council on any other item, whether it be on the agenda or not? And I'm happy to take comments now for any matters that are on the agenda as well. And if there are any comments that are related to the agenda item regarding Citizens United, as a prudential matter, I'm going to be recusing myself, and I believe Vice Mayor Snyder may have something to say on that front as well.
Yes. Based on the advice of City Attorney, I hereby disclose that I may have a conflict of interest in this matter. I'm employed by the Property Casualty Insurers Association of America. Given that my employer may be negatively affected by the constitutional amendment that reverses the decision of the Supreme Court of the United States and Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission, in some of our cases, I hereby recuse myself from this matter pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3115F, and this is the statement provided to me on advice of council. Thanks very much.
And just to be clear on my issue, it would be potentially, and again, not that there's a direct conflict, but I do work for the federal government at the Department of Homeland Security, and just to be prudent, in case any of this comes up again, in matters that I attend to, best that I not participate, but not that there's a clear conflict at this point. So we're going to turn the gavel at this point over to Mr. Pepe. So I get to say, let's hear it. Is that where we are? Okay. So our first speaker is?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Robert Crowe. I'm one of the 45 residents of the city who has requested the council to adopt a resolution in support of a constitutional amendment to reverse the United States Supreme Court's decision in Citizens United, which allows corporations and unions to spend unlimited amounts of money for the purpose of electing or defeating candidates in our elections. If adopted, the resolution would declare the position of the council that corporations should not receive the same legal rights as natural persons, that money is not speech, and that political expenditures can be regulated. These concepts are by no means simple ones, but at the same time, they are not radical ideas. Fundamentally, they are born out of the common sense and based on the framework of what the earliest citizens of this country intended, when they demanded that the Bill of Rights be included in our Constitution. This unlimited money we object to is spent not by individuals, not by voters, but by artificial entities we created, namely corporations. The vast sums that are amassed by multinational corporations, thanks to the special privileges we grant to them for the purpose of facilitating business, are no match for voters. When you and I participate in elections, we seek the best outcome for our children, our family, our communities, and our nation. Our human nature allows us to conceive of the common good, but when a business corporation participates in an election, it seeks the best outcome only for itself, its business. It is, after all, an artificial entity. The most important reason, I think I can give you for supporting this effort, is that our elected representatives spend 30% to 70% of their time raising money for elections. Today, under Citizens United, a candidate must raise ever-growing amounts to finance a campaign. This translates into more time raising money and less time on the people's business. Whatever problem you would like Congress to address, it will not get the attention it deserves as long as our representatives spend most of their time raising money. Just like it was a good idea to amend the Constitution to elect our senators by popular vote, and just like it was a good idea to amend the Constitution to give women the right to vote, it is a good idea to amend the Constitution to ensure that our elections are put back in the hands of individuals, the voters, and to ensure that we protect our system from corruption. There is significant interest in our community for national campaign finance reform. The many Falls Church residents who signed the letter asking you to adopt this resolution want you, on their behalf, to send the message to the General Assembly and Congress that the problem of unlimited spending in our elections must be fixed. Lastly, I want to say that it is a testament to the civic engagement of this community that you are giving careful consideration to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We had some other slips on the topic. Did folks want to speak now, or wait till we got to that point on the agenda? You've got a choice. If you want to go ahead now, that's fine. Next up, I have Julia Eid. Yes?
Good evening to the mayor and to the members of the council. I am a resident of Falls Church City and one of the 45 residents also, who have asked the council to support a U.S. constitutional amendment to overturn the Supreme Court's Citizens United ruling. With the Citizens United case, the Supreme Court ruled that corporations can be treated as people with respect to campaign financing, and that money is a form of free speech. This ruling is harming the ability of the electorate to select candidates who will represent we, the people, and it is hiding the names of corporations that sway our candidates with large and unreported contributions. In today's elections, only the wealthy can afford to run for office. Those that aren't are forced to continuously fundraise, taking valuable time away from serving the needs of America's residents. Now there are virtually unlimited funds available to any candidate who is willing to take it, and what kind of pressure does this have on the victors' votes? The reporting laws on contributions are such that we often don't know who has contributed until after the election is over. Who will our representatives represent with this type of dynamic? While the Falls Church City holds nonpartisan elections, the impact of Citizens United ruling is nonetheless felt by her citizens. We can unwittingly elect a representative at the national level who's financed and beholden to entities who are surely expecting to influence votes. These votes affect all Americans, including those in Falls Church. We ask you to make a statement that you support the power of people over money interests, and for transparency to see who is influencing our representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments at this point? Okay. We'll turn it back over to our regularly scheduled meeting.
Sir, I had a comment. I just was waiting for the other ones to go.
Oh, sure, sure. Go ahead. I yield it back to Mr. Pepe. Just state your name and address for the record.
No, that's fine. My name is Jamar Joseph. I work for the Falls Church Housing Corporation. The address is 330 Virginia Avenue in Falls Church. Just wanted to come in and introduce myself to the council members. I've been newly appointed as the Executive Director as of three months ago, and wanted to come in and thank each of the council members personally for the city's support of Falls Church Housing Corporation. You have provided us with the much-needed financing for our residents and for our Winter Hill community, time and time again, and we truly appreciate it. To the extent to the seniors that are holding yoga classes in our community center, to the accessible enhancements into their units, we truly appreciate all of the financial support that the city has provided. Also wanted to let you know that as Executive Director, we intend in 2014 to really ramp up our efforts for maintaining and also increasing the preservation of affordable housing and the creation of new housing through initiatives that we see over the horizon. With your support and your assistance and stewardship, we would like to truly make a dent into providing an unmet need of affordable housing for our workforce, and also for seniors, and also for disabled persons, to at least provide them with the safe and secure affordable housing that everyone can appreciate and enjoy. Also, too, I have copies of our annual report, if you'd like to see it, to see the progress that we've made in the last year, and also to get a sense of where we're going in the coming year. We, again, appreciate it. Also, just to kind of give you an update, we have submitted for the upcoming CBDG grant to provide an emergency shelter during power outages, during inclement weather situations, so seniors and persons with disabilities can come to our community room for a heating and cooling space during times of an emergency. And we appreciate, you know, continued support on that. We feel like it would be a great asset for the community to come in, especially folks that are seniors and disabled, that they can come in and have a place where they wouldn't have to go and then get a hotel room or find temporary housing during time of an emergency. So, again, my name is Jamar Joseph, and I'd love to come and meet with you personally and talk more about our goals and objectives for the coming year. And I have these annual reports here, so.
If you get them to the deputy clerk, she'll make sure we all get copies.
Sure, sure, definitely.
And thanks for the introduction. I'm sure we'll be seeing you around, and I'm guessing we'll be scheduling some time at some point to hear a little more in-depth about what's going on, some of the needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Are there any other members of the council? Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Seth Hemmaway. I reside at 600 Fulton Avenue, and I wanted to speak up briefly about the changes, the forthcoming changes to the stormwater ordinance. I think the city's made a lot of great strides toward addressing our really serious stormwater problems. However, I wanted to, in particular, speak out toward retaining the 35% pervious surface standard, which is in the regulation right now. I know the city's particularly concerned with addressing the phosphorus, which is a pollutant within the stormwater, but I want to just raise your awareness about kind of the volume of stormwater. And as a dog owner, I get to go out and walk in the rain a lot, and just, I'm sure you're aware of it, but there's a huge amount of water running off of our, obviously, our streets and sidewalks, and increasingly lots where we have much larger houses with driveways, with, you know, patios. A lot of, you know, people want to develop. I understand that. But stream scour, which is the issue I'm talking about, is where you have so much volume moving through our streams that it's almost impossible to kind of repair that, and I know we're spending a lot of money, for instance, on the Howard Herman Stream Valley Park to restore that. I'd like to see us doing more on an individual lot basis to try to get as much retention as possible. So, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
I do also have a speaker slip from Mr. Keith Thurston. I'm happy to take those comments now or when we get to the item. Mr. Thurston?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Keith Thurston, 1015 Birch Street, Falls Church, and I'm speaking tonight for the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. We had sent a letter to the council concerning the stormwater program that's being passed, and had a number of items in that, and understand that it'll be deferred now until the February timeframe, but would like to reinforce our assertion that the lot coverage limits are needed to be retained, so that the purposes of those are more than just water quality as are being addressed here, but also water volumes are very important. And also, if you don't have the amount of remaining green space on individual lots, you don't have the space to grow trees, to provide the absorption and things of that nature that would happen on-site. We think the on-site retention is equally as important as the infrastructure downstream. So we'd ask that you consider that to retain those. We know that there's some discussion about relocating them somewhere else in the code. That might be possible, depending on the level of variant enforcement that would occur in one part of the code versus another part. Some part of the code having more of an enforcement mechanism, say in zoning, than you might have in planning, for instance. And depending on the way lots are being redeveloped on an individual basis, it's not clear to me that each of those goes through the planning process the way one goes through the zoning process. So, on behalf of the village society, we're asking that you consider retaining those lot coverage standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurston. Are there any other members of the public? Please come forward. And if this is on City?
It is, yes.
So I'm going to pass the -- I'm going to pass the gavel back to Mr. Pepe. If you'd just state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Brian Siebel. I live at 602 O'Kaven Drive in Falls Church City. I didn't sign in, sorry. Thanks for having me speak. I just want to, I certainly support the motion on Citizens United, and I would just urge the council, I'm not going to talk much about the substance of that, but I would urge the council to delay the vote and postpone it until December 9th, when Councilmember Berry returns, and perhaps Mr. Tarter as well, because I know she was in support of the motion, and it would be nice to have a full vote, especially given the abstentions that are, that have been stated here. So certainly, the only thing I would say about the measure itself is that, you know, the Constitution preamble says "we, the people," and it is a Constitution of, by, and for the people, and corporations are, in fact, artificial entities and are created by the state and should be allowed to be regulated by the state. They should not be granted, just by their existence, constitutional privileges unless the states who create these corporations grant them privileges, which should be statutory in nature, not constitutional in nature. There's a very difference between human beings and artificial entities, which are corporations. And we do live by, we painstakingly allocate our House of Representatives to a one-person, one-vote model. It's not perfect, because some states doesn't divide up perfectly evenly, but here we've spent all this time focusing on one person, one vote, and yet if we allow money to enter the picture, unregulated, in an unregulated manner, we've allowed, essentially, we've kind of destroyed that principle. We've turned it from one person, one vote, to one We've turned it from one person, one vote, to $1, one vote, and that's really a perverting aspect to our democracy. So, we would hope that we can return the control over our political, you know, elections and so forth, back to the power and the vote of the people, and take the, allow us as human beings to control the money aspect that enters that picture. It's not to say that money will be completely out of politics, but essentially, this constitutional amendment would allow the people's elected representatives to have control over that process again, and the court has kind of taken that away from us. So, we're trying to restore what really has been the rule of law for more than 200 years of our society. So, anyway, thank you very much, and I'll likely, again, I hope that the council will defer this vote until two weeks from now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have that discussion when we get to a motion. Anyone else on the topic? We'll hand it back again.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address any item whatsoever, whether on the agenda or not? Those are all the comments we have. Veronica, if you would go ahead and summarize the written comments.
The Fairfax Falls Church Community Services Board submitted their fiscal and program oversight report for July through September of 2014 regarding stormwater. John S. Wolford, on behalf of the Northern Virginia Associate, Association of Realtors, provided the comments on the storm, provided their comments on the stormwater management ordinance. Dennis Samansky of 915 Hillwood Avenue, member of the Tree Commission, expressed the commission's desire for current landscaping and tree canopy requirements to be relocated from Chapter 48 to the new stormwater Chapter 35. The commission also suggested including new tree canopy fund regulations in the chapter. Regarding the Harris Teeter development, the Winter Hill Community Association Board updated the council on a site plan meeting Rushmark Properties had held with the homeowners, and the homeowners were pleased with the changes to a masonry wall and landscaping on the Winter Hill side of the project. The association also requested that the developers add low lighting lining, a pedestrian walk path leading from the Pocket Park to the Winter Hill parking lot. Regarding the historic home on Grove Avenue, Keith Thurston, on behalf of the Historic Falls Church Incorporated Board of Directors, submitted a petition requesting that the city cease all developer activity at 311 Grove Avenue and here an appeal to stop the demolition of the home. Regarding development at Broad and West Streets, a Grove Avenue resident opposed any change to Grove Avenue that would limit or restrict traffic on that street. The resident urged using other traffic calming measures, such as larger speed bumps, to cut down on cut-through or speeding traffic. Lisa Varuxis of 301 Grove Avenue opposed the proposed development at the corner of Broad and West Streets. She opposed the project due to the scale of the building, the loss of local businesses on the site, the addition of a traffic light on Broad Street, the possibility of a hotel being included in the plans, and the possible increase of cut-through traffic on Grove Avenue. Ms. Varuxis was also in favor of a smaller mixed-use development that included efficiency in one-bedroom apartments over store and restaurant space. Regarding the use of water sale proceeds, Connie Ridberg of 105 Hillier Street, member of the city's retirement board, urged the council to use the proceeds from the sale of the city's water utility to fund the city's two pension plans. She said the return on investment could be used to fund other city priorities. Regarding TR 13-38, the charter change regarding the November election date, Carol DeLong of 213 West Columbia Street urged council to hold an organizational meeting on either the first Monday of the year or a date certain, such as January 2nd or 3rd, to elect a mayor and vice mayor and adopt the council's rules of procedure.
Thank you. Mr. Kalin?
I'd just like to make a comment about Ms. Ridberg's letter, since I had spoken to her on Thursday at the quarterly meeting of the Pension Committee, or the Retirement Board, excuse me, and I had asked her about her view. She had reviewed it in detail. It's actuarially sound, and, most importantly, the math works. So, this is reviewed by Ms. Ridberg, who is a certified actuarial officer, which means she ought to know. Thank you.
All right, that takes us through summary of comments. Any council requests? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to note that as we approach the holiday season, there are a number of community gatherings. I communicated with the city clerk to make sure that we're all aware that these have been noticed as potential special gatherings of elected officials where public business may be discussed, and thank her for being on top of that. I think the first big one that comes up is before we meet again in chambers, it's the League of Women Voters gathering on Sunday, December 8th, I think. I'm not sure if that's been noticed, but just let's all keep our antenna up about that between now and the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Any requests? Thank you. We are on to report of the city manager to council. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch. Members of council, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Two things to report on. One, a piece of good news. The council approved a bond resolution just over a month ago to fund the TJ expansion, the future preschool project, city hall improvements, fire station improvements, new fire apparatus, and park improvements, among other things. And so, of course, we've been talking with the bond rating agencies about this debt issuance, which will be approximately $19 million of debt for those projects. And I did want to report that Standard and Poor's, which has rated the city's debt at double-A for many years, has upgraded the city's debt to triple-A. And so, they joined Fitch in rating the city at triple-A, and Moody's maintained their rating at AA1, which is one notch below triple-A, and all three rated the city's outlook as stable. A couple of things I just would share with the community and with the council in terms of the comments we serve, received from the rating agencies. They did, of course, note our reserve policy, and meeting our reserve policy as being a strong indicator of our financial strength. They noted our strong financial policies and our consistent ability to maintain balanced budgets. They noted our strong management, i.e. our CFO, Richard LaContre, city council's record of financial management, and the financial management culture of our management team. They noted our track record of funding our local pensions and other post-retirement benefits pursuant to what our actuaries tell us we need to fund them. And they also noted with approval, the voter's approval of the water sale and the agreement of the terms of that sale, and also the creation of our stormwater utility with a dedicated revenue stream to fund those infrastructure improvements. I just want to highlight that the council has taken a lot of tough decisions in recent years with an eye towards longer-term goals, and what those goals include are accomplishing a lot of very necessary capital improvements in the city. And by taking that long-term view, the council's been able to lower ultimately the cost to the taxpayer of those critical infrastructure needs. So, wanted to share that piece of good news, and we'll be putting out a, S&amp;P's word just came to us very recently, and so we'll be getting this out in the press release tomorrow. Secondly, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that this is Mr. Foster's last meeting and with the city council as he moves on to join the team with the Fairfax County School Division. And I just want to say, A, that we did have a nice event for him last Friday. It was completely inadequate to express our thanks to him for his service to the city. But just on a personal note, and I think on behalf of all city staff, you've been the best, and you have our highest respect and best wishes to you in the future. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Just two points on that. I'm still in denial that Mr. Foster's going to be leaving until, I actually hadn't come to grips with it at all until Wyatt indicated this is his last meeting with the city council. A lot of our dealings, obviously, with the city attorney are confidential just by nature, so the public doesn't always get to see the interactions that happen or the representation that we get from Mr. Foster. But I can truly say, Mr. Foster's been an outstanding individual person, colleague, and certainly an attorney to work with during my term on council. So, I can't begin to express my gratitude to him and also to his family. This is not a nine-to-five type of job for any of our senior staff. So, my thanks to his family as well. I know it means taking time away from his spouse, away from his son, and I thank them for allowing John to be part of our community, be involved with the city council and the rest of the community for all that he does, and, most importantly, getting us through the water transactions and helping us resolve those issues. So, my personal thanks on behalf of the city council as well. You'll be sorely, sorely missed. Mr. Kalin?
Two comments to, I echo Nader's comments, and especially the very productive and actually enjoyable opportunity to work at length on the issue of the sale of the water system. That was a wonderful experience, and it was a great team that John had assembled and worked well with. So, as a group activity, I thought it was, and clearly, the strategy was quite successful. In your new job, as I think I may mention to you, John, working with the, one of the largest school districts in the United States, I think you will find it a genuine character-building opportunity. So, you know, I really wish you the best on that. And on Wyatt's comments on ratings, which is, of course, my wheelhouse, that's really good news. It's a vote of confidence. And also, it's intended, from my, again, from my knowledge of 25 years working with the rating agencies, it's as much as a recognition of what is accomplished as it is, as a request to continue that into the future. And one of the two components of the ratings, which I don't stress, is the willingness and ability of the citizens to support the necessary tax rate to maintain the services and the importance of the general fund. And for those who are going to be here in the council, I pass the torch to Dave and Nader to make sure that the fund remains at the appropriate level.
No pressure there.
Total pressure. If I could put any more, I would. But anyway, that's great news, but it is what we need to maintain going forward to ensure that we retain the ratings that we have received. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I would just like to say a word about Mr. Foster. I was able to attend the staff event that was held at Four Provinces on Friday. It was not wholly inadequate. I think it was a very nice event, and I tried to say a few words on behalf of council, which I think were wholly inadequate, but we've made up for it here tonight. I was just struck by the admiration and respect and affection for you, John, and it reminded me that, you know, we're in a business that fundamentally is about people. And, you know, you work hard, you're professional, but you're a caring person, too, and I just want to say how much I've appreciated the help that you've given this non-lawyer in many sticky wickets that we've moved through here during my time on council. So, thank you very much. Wanted to just say a word about the bond rating. Mr. LaContre had responded to a question I feel I threw out. Loudoun County, a news report said, had sold 45 million in bonds at 3.18%, I think, and I asked Richard, what are we plotting for our interest rates? And he said 4.5% is what we now have in mind, since we're not thinking of beginning before FY 2016, according to his email. Obviously, a lot of difference between Loudoun and Falls Church, size-wise and so forth. The agencies do seem to rate us about the same, both Fitch and S&amp;P rate Loudoun and Falls Church the same. Moody's is, you know, we're a notch below Loudoun. But just going forward, I would like to understand more about, you know, what interest rates we really, number one, what interest rates can we really expect? And two, what sort of timetable are we looking at? If we're talking about going to bond not till FY 2016, that seems pretty far out there. You know, when do elections need to be held to pass bond referendums that would be plugged into the budgets? I think the community would benefit from understanding that, you know, there's some time-sensitive matters involved in bond referendums. So, that's just a question that will be put later. Thank you.
Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
With respect to John, I think the highest commendation you can make of any public official is that you left things better than you found them, and you certainly have, and I want to thank you for that, for that work in so many different areas. You demonstrated the highest competence as a lawyer, a problem-solving, problem solver, and a counselor, and it's much, much appreciated. And Fairfax is lucky to have you as their attorney in the future. Thank you very much. Going to the bond rating for just a minute, I think the importance of the adequate fund balance, strong management, willingness to make tough decisions on both on the part of the management and the city council, I think, is reflected in these ratings. There is a note that one of the ratings people said, "Congratulations are due, but now don't blow it." So, I think what she was saying there is, you've done some very, very hard work, but you need to keep that sort of hard work in the future. So, I think that's important to, for all of us to keep in mind. But this is not just a positive development for the staff and for the, for the council here, but especially for all of our citizens who have been willing to support the tough decisions we've had to make and to produce a government that has really excellent schools, excellent services, and is recognized as well for its financial management. So, thank you to all of our citizens.
Just on the bond rating issue, I think it's very exciting news. It certainly validates what members of the council have been saying, and I've said publicly that we have really begun to turn the corner. I think it's a very optimistic time for the city, as we've all alluded to, as I've alluded to in the past, more so than I felt before sitting at the dais here. So, I think we're definitely on an up trend, and we've got a lot of exciting things that are going to be happening in the city versus, you know, where it be, planning for new facilities or city facilities, deciding how we're going to use proceeds from the water sale of the system. But I do think what these ratings do show and help validate is that we've made very sound, financial, prudent decisions, and certainly, this is one measure of it. Another measure of it is what we're actually putting out as far as what capital projects we're doing, what our budgets look like. So, I think the entire community has a lot to take into account. So, I think it's great, positive news. Certainly, we couldn't have done it without our citizens and our citizens' support, without our school board as well, because they are part of the budget process, and we shouldn't overlook that as well. So, I think it's a great affirmation. But as Vice Mayor Snyder alluded to, I did think that it was pretty apropos, that it was, "Congratulations, but now don't blow it." I do think that that sends a signal. We do have funds coming into the city from various sales of proceeds that we need to manage very prudently, and given that we're, you know, starting to make the turn in the economy, there's a lot of mistakes that can be made. A lot of jurisdictions end up doing things that are not financially prudent once they turn the corner, and I certainly wouldn't want to see that happen to Falls Church. So, with that, I think there's a lot to celebrate, and I think we also have the responsibility to put forward information as Mr. Duncan suggested about why this is important, what this means at the end of the day. Otherwise, it's not, it's not very clear. So, understanding how it affects our ability to go to the markets and types of interest rates, what it means for our CIP planning... rates, what it means for our CIP planning and operating budgets, I think it's very, very important to communicate, not just to the council members, but also to the community at large. So I look forward to having that discussion, and certainly will be having that discussion as we move forward in our financial policies that we periodically look at. So I'm sure that this will come up again in, in several discussions. So I look forward to having that discussion with my colleagues. And thank you to our staff and citizens for their support. We are on to business on the agenda.
TO 13-18 is an item for public hearing. This is an ordinance to create Chapter 35 Stormwater, Article 1, Stormwater Management of the Falls Church City Code to clarify and reorganize existing stormwater management regulation, to add new language required by the state of Virginia.
Sir, counsel, this item is before you for public hearing only. The recommendation is to defer to February 10th to allow additional time to get both public input, but also to work with the planning commission on the zoning component of, of the ordinance that's before you. I've asked Jason Wistrum just to provide, for your benefit and for the community's benefit, a very brief update as to where we are in the, in the ordinance, and so let me turn it over to him for that purpose.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As Wyatt stated, just give you a, a brief outline of what TO 13-18 accomplishes. I've outlined four items, and then I can answer some questions if you have any. So I'd like to start with the first of which this ordinance is, one of the reasons we brought this forward and the way it is, is to take this opportunity of the state's language that they require us to adopt and to also reorganize our current ordinances, which are spread throughout the city code, into one streamlined, one-stop-shop for stormwater development criteria. It does put all of our requirements under one stormwater management permit instead of several discrete areas in the city's code. It gives developers a clear understanding and a clear path to follow as they look at our ordinance and they understand what they need to do. The second area that the, the ordinance addresses is the state mandated development criteria. There is some flexibility in these areas of which we've discussed, but I'll briefly go into, the first being water quality standards. In the staff report, I provided a table, Table 1, that shows our existing standards, what the state standards are and what we're proposing. So just briefly, the existing standards for redevelopment on single-family homes and new development is a 35% cap on impervious coverage. This is a surrogate for phosphorus, and that is roughly 1.5 pounds of phosphorus per acre per year. And what this ordinance is proposing is a standard of .41 across the board for all new development and redevelopment. And this is an area where we have some discretion. The city council can wish to, if they wish to, to exempt properties under one acre, or we can also use their standard of a 10% reduction, which actually is very equivalent to a .41 standard. On a non-single-family home, our existing standard for water quality is a 50% or less impervious coverage, then they have to meet the existing pollutant load. If they have a larger than that, which is the majority of our sites that are over 50%, they'll have to do a 10% reduction. So it's our current standard. In the future, we can adopt the, a 20% reduction in these areas, and if it's a new development, we can go with a .41 standard. The, the second criteria that's in the ordinance is a change to our water quality requi, or sorry, water quantity requirements, and these are designed to perfect, protect downstream properties and waterways from damage caused by increases in volume and peak flow that is a result of development. The general concept of the new requirement is to encourage a reduction in stormwater volume through the use of infiltration techniques. With peak flow, concerns also held back and controlled through onsite detention. For areas where there's existing localized flooding issues, this ordinance provides us a way to decrease flow rates from existing conditions or force a developer to upgrade a channel to accommodate additional flows. Another component of the ordinance that we have some discretion is in the grandfathering language. The city coun, council can adopt a, a date that is sooner than the July 1st that the state has in their sample language. This would be done under the current authority of the city council to adopt a, a more stringent The, the third component of the ordinance that I wanted to highlight was the language that's now, now included for the Virginia Stormwater Management Program General Permit. This is a permit that the state gives to any development that is one acre or more. So if, if some of our larger developments here in the city have to apply with DEQ right now to get a, a stormwater general, general permit for construction activities, and what the state has done is they've shifted the review responsibilities to the city, and that starts July 1. We have no discretion here. This is something we have to do. It, it's not too much of a, of a burden to, to take in, because we currently do a lot of the similar review, and it's a lot of the same paperwork. So it actually makes sense to do this. It streamlines the process and it'll help development move a little bit smoother. And then the last piece I wanted to highlight was the clarification for existing illicit discharge. Currently, our authority is somewhat weak, and it's under Chapter 34 of the Solid Waste Code. What this proposed ordinance does is it moves it under the stormwater chapter. It makes it very clear what is, what is stormwater, what's allowed to go in the stormwater system versus what's not, and the fines associated with those. So that, that's a, a brief overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks for that overview. I think it would also be helpful, I'd, the city council had a pretty robust discussion about that in work session, and I believe that there was particular questions that came out of that. So I think it might be helpful for the city manager to summarize what those areas were and if there's been any developments on those areas as far as our thinking and where we're headed.
The, much, much of the discussion at work session was on the, the question of the zoning measure of the 35% hard cap. And I laid out some concerns that I think the council should be aware of in moving that standard of, of impervious coverage out of its stormwater context and over into a zoning context. And we have not yet resolved all of those questions. Specifically, one that we've raised is that currently the trigger for enforcement of the 35% impervious cap is only when someone comes in to redevelop their property and is disturbing at least 2,500 square feet of, of soil. If it's moved into the zoning context, if you have over 35% impervious coverage, you're a non-conform, it becomes a non-conformity, and that would be triggered, a review of that could be triggered for any minor building permit that you might be applied for, or even a complaint. And so it is a very different context. We have not yet resolved exactly how to address those between a week ago and tonight. And so that is the reason for the request for additional time. And take some council direction on that, if council feels that you're, you're ready to provide direction on that, but to take some additional time to work through some of those enforcement issues and provide additional information on them.
And I think that's, that's jumping pop, maybe one step ahead of part of our discussion. As, as I recall, we, we had set up a way of analyzing this issue. And first was, if we decide to go and adopt the, the regulations as it applies to residential, that was a yes or a no. And if the answer is yes to that, do we continue to also layer on top of that the hard cap, 35%? Or do we maintain that as a proxy, which is in the code? But that would be essentially the, the, the minimum that we would do, is maintaining it and not adopting this further. Then the next question was, do we adopt both? And if the answer to that is yes, then the next series of questions was, where does it go and what impact does it have, whether it's in the zoning or somewhere else in the code? Because they could have different effects. So I think that's, if we can keep the presentations and also the discussion to that framework of discussions, I think it would be helpful. I think these are very complicated issues, a lot of level of detail, a lot of technical issues, which I don't think it's, it's helpful for the council to dive in, but look at the general policy issues and really focus in on that, since we have, have the, the reports and, if you will, in the weeds issues. But we need to really, I think, from the dais here, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we focus in on these key policy issues, that'll help us go through this process and be all, be also able to explain this to our citizens and educate them and get the best responses back. So if we can try to keep that framework, I think we're best served. I don't know if my fellow council members had any ideas on that front, but that's essentially what we discussed at the work session. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree and appreciate your efforts to try to focus our attentions on what we need to focus on. Let me just think out loud for just a second. Between now and February, the question that I guess I would most like to have answered, Jason, when you said, one of the objectives is to decrease the flow rates from the existing conditions. So there's the, the debate about whether the .41 standard is primarily aimed at quality of water. It is primarily aimed at quality of water, but I think there's also an assertion, a belief, that it, it can address quantity as well, if that's what you mean by flow rates. And we've heard tonight, and you hear elsewhere in the community, that there, there's not an acceptance of that belief, I guess, that, that in fact, flow quantity is a problem, and if we remove the 35%, then that's going to be a bigger problem. So I guess what I'm asking for is, is there any actual data that shows, you know, a typical lot that has been developed against a new standard, where we can say, here is what we have learned, based on what we've seen, what we can measure in terms of quantity as well as quality? And that's just something that I would, Vice Mayor Snyder's talked about, needs for community dialogue. That, that's the, that's the part of the dialogue I particularly am trying to understand. Thanks.
Other council members? Mr. Cal?
Regarding the credit, work we were doing, the credit committee, when would you believe, did you plan to raise that? I ask because since I was the council's representative to this, I will be off council soon enough, and then the information that I have provided and my ability to add to the discussion will no longer be available as a council member when, when, because we have completed the work on that. That, that committee actually completed its work.
Yes, we've, we've tentatively scheduled that for the second, December 2nd work session.
Other members of council? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I, I just hope that during this, this interim, in addition to refining some of the answers to these questions and potentially resolving them, we also get this material in a way that citizens can understand it, because it's virtually impenetrable now, and people need to know what is the impact, if you live in a single-family home, what is the impact of one thing versus another, and what are the environmental and other economic trade-offs? So hopefully, there can be an education program with the community as well, so that we get input from all the stakeholders before we make our policy judgments. So the city manager is nodding yes, so I assume that'll be part of what we do during this period. Thanks.
And just on that front, I mean, getting this right is really important. Dare I say that we're leaders on this front compared to where some other jurisdictions may be? So I think Falls Church is being looked at as an example of how to do this implementation. I think that, that's come through in some letters that we've gotten, and that's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shields, about the timing of where we're at compared to other jurisdictions. Everybody's going to be facing these issues. But I, but I do think the region's kind of looking at, at ways of how we're handling it. So, you know, it's a great opportunity, and as we talked about, and Vice Mayor Snyder alluded to, understanding how, what the impacts are is very important. One comment that I believe I made, that was also echoed by other council members, is we just need to make sure that we're not creating unintended consequences and revisiting this by essentially making properties undevelopable or prohibit, making it so cost prohibitive that we can't do the good work that we're trying to do. So understanding the costs associated with this, what this all means in various situations in the city is, is important to get a sense of and being able to explain that, and I don't think we're quite there yet. Mr. Cal?
With the, we had five meetings, I believe, which I attended almost all of them, which went for maybe, what'd you say, 10 to 12, 13 hours total of discussion, not to mention stuff. The problem that you've outlined is real, but the cause of that is that the Virginia regulations themselves are impenetrable. And that is going, that's the hurdle. I mean, it's, it's just so hard to understand what the state of Virginia wants, plus they have oddities that were introduced that are inconsistent with other parts. It's a great request, and you're absolutely right, but I think it's going to be a struggle to get it down to a really intelligible level because of the, the way the state has designed this, just as, so they don't get frustrated if the staff has a little trouble making it easy to understand.
Other council members? If I can get a motion, then we'll open this item up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I moved, I moved to defer TO 13-18 to February 10th, 2014.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder on the second? Like to open this item up for public comment? We had, I believe, at least two comments earlier, so those should be made part of the record. Any other members of the public that wish to address this item? See one hand. Strong, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Young. My address is 608 Timber Lane in the city of Falls Church. I could spend a lot of time commenting on this, but we're deferring, and there'll be a lot of discussion for that. I want to just highlight something that hasn't been discussed either in work session or tonight, and that is the policies that we have with respect to things like permeable pavers, gravel, other things that have traditionally been used to ameliorate the, the effects of runoff, both in terms of quantity and quality. I'll add swimming pools, Mr. Snyder, to that list. The problem is, those are all considered by the city to be impermeable, therefore, there's no reduction in the quantity or quality, which, in point of fact, there really is. This is some, something I would hope that council would ask staff to look into, so that as we consider, for example, a 35% hard cap, whether it's there or not, we have a brochure that the city hands out to homeowners urging things like permeable pavers and the other things that I mentioned, and others on top of that. It makes no sense for anybody to do that if they're not getting credit unless they're truly green and they're saying, I'm going to do this for the benefit of the environment, but the city's going to give me absolutely no credit for it in any of these contexts. So it's something that is a, it's a difficult problem. It makes things even more complicated. I have spent many hours on this. I'm about to start my new home in the city, and I've spent a lot of money with the engineers over at Phillips. And when you all say this is complicated, I want to second and third that motion. It is really, really complicated. And to bring it down to the level that Mr. Snyder referred to, how does this impact on any individual homeowner? I'm trying to do it as much as an experiment as for my own use, and I can tell you it's difficult. So I hope that staff will be given the opportunity. So I hope that staff will be given the opportunity to really robustly go into this, and perhaps we can have more time with the public to really try to figure it out. Thank you.
Mr. Callen?
Jason, I would think you'd have a word or two on that, because that was a major component of the credit program that we spent hours on that, on that topic. So I think part of your concern has already been addressed, and I think it'd be useful for Jason or Wyatt to provide some information, and I can fill in the blanks, which for me are substantial.
If the council would like to hear about that now, I do want to make sure, because this stuff can get confusing. So in this discussion, we're talking now about the Stormwater Utility and the credit policy. Is that what we're talking about? So that's a different, different than what's before us here, although the two ought to be compatible with each other.
Yeah. When the citizen mentions the 35% cap and credits, he's actually referencing credit for using a surface to get towards the 35%. So the way that we view it now, he's right. If it's a permeable paver, we don't consider that permeable for the impervious calculation. And I know that sounds a little off, but the reason for that is that permeable pavers are used for a water quality feature, they're not a water quantity. So in a heavy rain event, water will run off of them, just like concrete will. And if we're going to use a hard cap, which is what we've been doing with 35%, then we've held that line, knowing that in the future, we revisit this.
But we did discuss it in the other context.
Yeah, in the other context, that would be a way to get credit off of your utility fee by having a permeable paver, because it provides water quality benefits.
Other questions?
None, except I think this illustrates the importance for education and for working to answer the questions that Mr. Young and others will have asked and will in the future. Thanks.
And I think the best way, as far as the credit issues go, it's a Venn diagram with circles that are not necessarily clear. So.
You'll go blind.
Yeah, there's, you know, dare I say not to try to overcomplicate things, but even if there's quick graphical ways of showing what it is we're talking about, such as, you know, I think there's still a lot of interrelationships between what we're trying to do on the credit front and what's before us now, and trying to show what it is we're talking about in a way that's digestible, like Venn diagrams or just charting it out, in a way that's, to the extent feasible, penetrable, or impervious. How about that?
I'm going to start eating my cookie if we don't move on here.
We're going to, you're going to be on the, with Ira leaving, you're going to become part of the credit group.
Mr. Callen?
Since I tend to jump to the financial stuff, I mean, it ends up on the same bill, right? Okay, that's the point. I mean, whether you want to call it part of the impervious surface, or the water, a volume issue, or the quality issue, it ends up on the same bill. So that's what people will be starting to mix and match. Okay, these types of distinctions, which are very real when you're in the industry, tend to blur for people who aren't, because when they get the bill, they're going to look at the final number, and they want to know what credit they got for what. Thank you.
Anything else before we take a vote? If I can have the roll call vote, please, and it is a motion to defer.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. TO 13-26 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Section 48-235, principal uses permitted by right to maintain principal use status of water utility infrastructure subject to sale.
Council, this is a housekeeping amendment to the zoning ordinance pursuant to the recently approved sale of the water system. Specifically, the zoning ordinance will be amended to allow for water and water pumping stations to be owned, not only by the city, but a public water authority, which would include the purchaser of the city's system, Fairfax County Water Authority. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions by council members? I just had one question, Mr. Foster, on this. This language, I believe, changed since the time we saw it last, correct? I believe this was more expansive, and we changed it to city or public water authority.
Yeah, it's not been changed since first reading. You're correct, there was a discussion at the work session on this, and it has been changed since the work session.
Okay. I believe I raised it at the work session to try to limit it, so that this is the language that limits it?
Yes.
Thank you for making that change. All right. Anything else by council members? If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve TO 13-26.
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Callen on the second? Like to open this item up for a public comment? Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. Veronica, I don't believe we had any written comments on this. So I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment. If I can have the roll call, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council.
If you could read the next item, please?
TR 13-36 is a resolution to adopt FY 2015 funding recommendations for Community Development Block Grant and Home Improvement Partnerships Program funds.
Thank you. And before we take this item up, as I previously disclosed, as it relates to just one item on this matter, which is the Falls Church Housing Corp's request that I own property at 243 Gundry Drive. And my wife is president of the Homeowners Association there, and I was previously a member. Given that this is an issue that impacts the larger community on a variety of issues, I can consider these matters fairly and objectively, and I'm disclosing that as simply as a prudential matter, not that there's any conflict. Mr. Shields?
Mayor Baruch, members of council. Dana Lewis will take the lead in giving the report on the recommendations from the Housing Commission.
Good evening, council members. I'm Dana Lewis, and I'm the Housing Program Analyst, and this is Tori McKinney, and she is a member of the Housing Commission. The council is requested to approve by resolution the Housing Commission's recommendations for the allocation of federal Community Development Block Grant and Housing Investment Partnerships Program funds to local and nonprofit agencies. And as you're aware, the city participates in the federal CDBG and home programs through a cooperative arrangement with Arlington County. We use these funds to support eligible activities established by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and all of them benefit persons with low and moderate incomes that are city residents. CDBG activities include public services, housing rehabilitation, home buyer assistance, and economic development. Home activities assist the city in carrying out a variety of housing activities. We use our funds for rental assistance. And just so that you're aware, no more than 10% of the city's allocation funds may be expended for planning or admin costs. So the city receives 10% admin costs, and we have to give Arlington County an additional 10% for that total 20%. In addition, only 15% of the funds can go for public service activities. So the total amount of funding requested for FY 15 is 103,675 of CDBG funds and 20,000 of home funds. We received six proposals, and we are anticipating 83,981 in CDBG funds and 21,972 in home funds. And we don't have those final numbers yet. And so as a function of its charter, the Housing Commission annually reviews proposals for CDBG and home funding, and then they submit the recommendations to council. And so at this point, I'll have Tori McKinney say a few words.
Good evening, mayor and city council, and city manager, and city attorney, for, what, a day or two? My name's Tori McKinney. I'm a member of the Housing Commission. And this is the favorite part, my favorite part of this job, is this time of year when we welcome applicants into our office and ultimately award money to these worthy causes to promote home rental assistance and other sorts of programs. So our commission is comprised of five residents of the city. We're all volunteers. And what we did is, we had held two public hearings in October, and there were five applicants total that appeared for the funding. And after quite a bit of deliberation and spirited discussion, we were able to actually fund all five. Now, not fully fund all five programs, but we were able to award a percentage of funds to most of the folks that came before us. And as I said, we recognize the value that these federal funds bring to the city. They allow the city to assist in the hard work of these organizations to promote housing and rental assistance. So I'm completely honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, council, for staff members? And before we take the vote, as I previously mentioned, I believe some of these materials may end up going to the federal government. So as far as any federal funding that's there, and I know that we have to do reports, that my name not appear on those reports, even though they're internal, in case they do go forward, if my name is not included in those, or any representations referencing my name being included in those.
Okay.
Anything else by council members before I take up a motion?
Just like to say thank you to the folks on the Housing Commission and staff, who do a lot of hard work that doesn't often get noticed much. I've had a chance to attend a few meetings, and it's inspiring to see how much effort they're expending on behalf of folks in the community who, you know, can use a helping hand up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members? If I can get a motion, and then we'll open this up.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt PR 13-36.
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Callen on the second? Like to open this item up for public comment? Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. Veronica, do we have any written comments on this? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment and ask for the roll call vote.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
And before we get to the next item, given that there may be some federal-related issues dealing with our legislative packet, as a pure prudential matter, and I haven't had a chance to discuss these fully, but I think, given my day job with the federal government, and some of these touching upon those issues, that could, again, nothing necessarily that's in conflict, but best that I not participate in the discussions after discussing this with Mr. Foster and others. So I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself, and on this portion, turn the gavel over to Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, will you read this item, please?
TR 13-37 is a resolution adopting the City of Falls Church 2014 legislative program.
All right. Before we begin, lines 1456 through 1684, concern an issue which, my understanding is, we're not voting on under this agenda item, but will be voting on under a separate agenda item, which is TR 13-39. And that concerns the Citizens United issue, which is included in this package, but we're in fact, breaking that out and voting on that separately.
Yes, in the staff report, it does reference that, and then it referenced that it's being pulled out as a separate TR resolution, as you noted. And so in the actual attachment, that will be adopted as your legislative program. It is not included, because it'll be a separate standalone item.
Okay, thanks very much. All right. With that clarification, I'll begin then the discussion with Deputy Manager Cindy Mester.
Good evening, council. Thank you. As a follow-up to your work session, this is the legislative program for the 2014 General Assembly session, with the federal item, as noted, running separately. And after this item, you will have a standalone charter amendment that will also go to the General Assembly. This item is time-sensitive in that there is a charter amendment, and so we need to get it to the General Assembly for pre-filing, which ends before your December 9th meeting, and the General Assembly meeting will be starting in January. The legislative program remains mostly unchanged from your work session. I will note that the NVTA and NVTC items are still in draft. They will be final by their full board meetings before January, but there's been no changes to the drafts in your attachment. And the school board item remains as informational only in the staff report and as attachment, and I have removed it from the legislative reference, because it will not be adopted till January. You do have proposed revised language changes before you in your folder. The top page is highlighted in yellow, and that is to add at line 161, a transportation funding language, as discussed at the council work session. And this basically acknowledges that as a result of the 2013 General Assembly, there was new transportation funding through House Bill 2313, and then also capital allocations and the codification of the subsidy allocation model, the SAM formula, for how the NVTC awards its funding. And that codification is very important to the City of Falls Church, because it has a longtime-held negotiated Hold Harmless Clause, and it's now been codified. So those two pieces of legislations have strong benefit for the City of Falls Church. And so the recommended position is that there'd be no legislative changes to either of these funding or state code sections till a full year's worth of implementation, because we're still sorting out the challenges of it, but you don't want to have unintended consequences. And so line 172 speaks to that position, and I will need to correct my typo from this evening, because it's House Bill 2313, and that would be in the corrected final copy. So that's at line 161 to 173. The text is in blue, so it's easy to see the additional language that we would add to a priority position. Also at the dais, you have a letter addressed to the Secretary of Transportation regarding the Department of Rail and Public Transit Transit Capital Allocation Recommendations, which are coming out of the Citizens Advisory Group, Stakeholder Group, that the Commonwealth Transportation Board will vote on December 4th. This is a letter submitting the City of Falls Church comments prior to the CTV's deliberations. And the letter would be, signature is Vice Mayor Snyder, as the lead transportation liaison for council. And as his request, since it's tied to the legislative program, I brought it to you all this evening to give your concurrence for that execution of the letter. That letter needs to get to the CTV by November 29th, so this would be your last meeting in which to comment on that. And then, as the VML TESDAC representative to that citizen group, I will be speaking to these issues December 4th. The letter has attached to it the Minority Report that spells out in more detail the technical issues of the concerns. But in a nutshell, by the way, the state is changing how they apply the new tiering to total, from total cost to gross. The Northern Virginia localities, and City of Falls Church included, will have to have more local match in order to get the new state money. And so in a proportional share, the state change increases our local match while reducing the rest of the states. So in the aggregate, we will see more dollar amounts, but it will cost us more to achieve that. And that is the concern that we've called out in the one item that this letter says that the City of Falls Church would not support. We are requesting that they would delay implementing that change for one year, so the full implications of that change can be fully assessed, as they have not been to date. So with that, I would ask the council approve the legislative program as amended for the transportation funding item that's before you this evening, and would welcome any further comments from the Legislative Committee and/or Mr. Snyder in particular, on the DRPT transportation items.
Thank you, council. I'd entertain a motion to get things started of approval.
I'd entertain a motion to get things started of approval of TR 13-37 as revised on lines 161 through 173, and deletions of lines 1456 through 1684.
I'll move that change.
Thanks. You've been so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, counsel? There being no discussion at this point, we'll open the item to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address us on this item? Okay, there being none. Madam Clerk, have we received anything in writing? Thank you very much. The public hearing part of this item is now closed. I turn it back to council. Any discussion on the part of council? Okay, there being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Okay.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
And Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. That item passes unanimously. I'll now pass the gavel back to the mayor.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. We are on to the next agenda, and if I can have that item read, please.
TR 13-38 is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend sections of the city charter to conform with City Charter Section 3.01, setting November election and election date for city council and the school board.
Mr. Foster?
Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping item to amend, a request that the General Assembly amend three sections of the city charter, as is laid out in the staff report. I would like to bring to the council's attention some feedback I've gotten from some council members regarding the proposed amendment to Section 4.05, induction of members. The current proposed language at line 109 provides that the first meeting of a newly-elected council shall take place on the second Monday in January. Concern has been raised that depending on the particular year, that would be as late as January 13. And it has been suggested that council may want to consider a different language that would move that first meeting earlier on the calendar. And so, I'll wait for feedback from city council. If there's interest in pursuing that, I do have some proposed changes to line 109 that would address that issue.
Council members? I mean, I do have a question on that, just to help frame the discussion. It would just be a carryover by there being newly-elected council, so they could, that could be the first meeting, per se, would be the 13th.
Yeah. I think that one concern that's been raised is that what that would mean is, practical matter, is that there would either be no work session the first Monday in January, or if there were, that it would be the previous mayor and vice mayor who would be heading up that first work session before the first organizational meeting were held. That's the concern.
Or, in the instance, if I may, in the instance that the presiding officers had not sought reelection, or had not successfully obtained reelection, there would in fact not be anyone to run the first work session.
That is correct.
Is that?
That's also a potential, you know, outcome.
So, the suggestion was the first Monday after the first Friday, something like this?
Yeah. We could, to address that concern, the language would read at 109 instead, quote, "on the first Monday after the first Friday in January." And so, with that changed language, the earliest meeting would be on Monday, January 4. It would be no earlier than that with that change. And that, I think, would address the concern that Mr. Duncan had just articulated, as well as the concerns that I'd identify.
And yet, would also push us out beyond a holiday week, when members who had school kids who might be off and might not want to troop back on January the 2nd would not be required to, whereas everybody would be back in place by the first Monday after the first Friday. School would always start, you know, by the 4th or 5th.
Or to be really radical, since I'm not gonna be there, you could actually have a work session without having elected leadership, and use the work session to have a discussion about the leadership before everybody just sits down and does it behind closed doors. So, that would be another way to approach it.
And I had thought about that. And for yet a third option, I mean, Mr. Pepe will know, in Maryland, my friend is on the Rockville Council, they were elected in November, the same as our people, and they've already been sworn in, and they're up and running, and have chosen their leadership. I mean, Rockville, which is multiple times bigger than we are, I guess they think we're slow learners or something. It takes us longer to transition into office. But if you really were reinventing the wheel, you could say, you know, 40 days after the November election, the first Monday, 40 days after the November election, which would usually fall sometime around the middle of December, when council normally would not be meeting, because it quits on the 9th, but I'm not gonna go any further, because... But if future councils, you know, wanted to, it is a bit of a burden on people who did not seek reelection to have to continue serving all the way through the end of the year, and it's a staff burden to have essentially, sometimes four or five, at least three or four more council members than they normally do to prepare packets for and so forth. But I'm happy with Mr. Foster's first Monday after the first Friday.
From just the work session, what, I see what we're trying to do is, we're trying to balance the two, but my concern is that there may be members who actually decide to take extended trips right around the holidays. You know, and again, not that this is likely to happen anytime in the, you know, current foreseeable future for me, but I have been known to try to find the cheapest airfares, because I have flexibility in traveling around the holidays, and if the earliest date is the 5th, that butts up against airfare and travel issues for some members who are not strictly tied to the school calendars just yet, or may never be. So, I think what we were trying to come up with in the work session is try to have something, you know, to ensure that members can be there and have some precision, so it's not around the holiday timeframe. So, I thought that that's what we settled on, understanding that there could be this gap of a work session, and I think there's two ways of dealing with it. One is what Mr. Pepe suggested, life goes on without, quote-unquote, "the mayor and vice mayor" possibly being there, which would be the situation if neither one seeks reelection, et cetera. But there's been occasions where that's happened, and there's somebody else who chairs the meeting. So, I think that can be worked out before there's the organizational meeting, or depending on how many weeks go by, there may not be a meeting. So, I don't think that's the, you know, end of the world. I think what could be problematic is if members are not present because they are on travel, or they're looking to come back, because it is the closer to the holiday. So, on balance, I tend to lean towards making sure that it's an inclusive process, and people don't feel like they're rushing, having to rush back.
Just a question. Who would, for purposes of, I don't know, emergency response, or signing papers, or whatever, who would the mayor be for the 13 days, say, between December 31st and January 13th? I mean, what's the succession? Is it like, you know, the Secretary of State, or whatever? I mean, what do we do?
Mr. Duncan, I believe they hold over until their successors are qualified and take office, but I would need to confirm that. That's usually the way it is, but I'd want to go back and confirm.
Yeah, they couldn't hold over if they had not been...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Could they hold over if they'd not been elected or not on election?
That's the, you know, that's the problem, is if they have not been reelected.
I don't know.
They do stay in office, again, typically, until their successors have been qualified. Right.
I mean, I hear the mayor's concerns. I'm trying to find some middle ground. My mother-in-law...
Or the way that it's happened before, I think, is if we know that multiple members are gonna be out of town, the council can say, "We're having this person run things," in case there is an emergency call that needs to happen, or there's an emergency meeting that needs to happen. And I believe that's happened before. You know, not that anything came up, but there's been times where Vice Mayor Snyder and I have been out of the jurisdiction, and, you know, we've had to figure out who's gonna handle things if things come up in the leadership that need to be handled, et cetera.
Just from a, back to the point about other jurisdictions that get started sooner than we do, is there a sense of why we do what we do? And why do we wait so long? And is there any belief that, you know, we want to hit the ground running sooner?
Talking about compared to Roanoke?
Well, Rockville was the one I was thinking of. I haven't done an exhaustive survey or anything.
Yeah. I don't know what the Virginia, or the Maryland statutes say. I can tell you that Virginia statute provides that when you have a November election, the oath of office has to be administered by January 1. It can be administered before January 1, but that the, those individuals who are elected at a November election take office officially as of January 1. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that would explain why there's a difference between Virginia and your colleagues in Rockville, Maryland.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to find a middle ground. I mean, I'm getting no love from my mother-in-law, who insists that we all show up here on January 1, by God, and take the oath of office, and get your butts in gear and do your work. So, I am trying to find a date that will accommodate, you know, most ordinary, you know, schedules. It just seems to me like waiting until the 8th, 9th, 10th, 13th is a little deep into January for, you know, a budget cycle, things gotta get done. I don't know. I'd like to see us get started a little sooner.
Mr. Mayor, let the record reflect that I agree with Phil Duncan's mother-in-law on this point. I think the cleanest thing, really, and it's, it may be inconvenient, and I don't want to force it on people, so I'll be flexible, but the best thing we could do is have that the new council fully constituted in the leadership as soon after January 1 as possible for emergency declarations, as well as appointments to boards and regional boards and commissions. There are lots of reasons why you want to move this earlier rather than later. So, again, I'm flexible, but it occurs to me that there's some wisdom to getting this done very quickly, and as we have traditionally in the July timeframe.
Other council members?
John, I got a question for you. I don't know where you're gonna find the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Who's on first?
Third base.
You're on first.
All right. So, where we're at is, the earliest that it could be would be what, John? Under the proposed change?
The alternate language that I sketched out, the earliest that would be, would be Monday, January 4. Now, another way we could do it, to address the concerns raised by Mr. Duncan and Mr. Snyder, would be that we could have language that says that the first meeting would be on January 3. If, however, January 3 falls on a Sunday, it would be on the immediate next Monday. Just another suggestion.
Yeah. Again, you know, I know that this go-around, we were trying to accommodate, because we didn't have anything in place, we were trying to accommodate everybody in coming up with the date, so, again, let's not make it too complicated. I think if the 4th, so the 4th would be the earliest, what would be the latest? It would be January 15 under, what would it be under the language that you proposed, John? The alternative language?
He's looked at the perpetual calendar, I feel.
Pulling up my calendar.
Is there a program for this?
Yeah. I don't have that app. If there is, if there's an app. The latest that first day could be is the 7th, right? It would be four days later. So, if it's the first Monday after the first Friday in January, the earliest would be January 4. The, yeah, the latest, I think, would perhaps be January, I don't know. The 8th. The latest day, any given day of the week could be is the 7th. I think it would be the 9th.
Yeah. Right. The latest, the latest first Friday in January would be the 7th, right?
And the earliest would be the 4th?
Right.
And so, it would be the 10th, right? Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, 7, 8, 9, 10.
In Virginia, things automatically default to the day after Sunday. You can't do business. It used to be you couldn't do official business on Sunday. For courts, for court filings. That's right. Yeah. I think that the consensus is that the earliest it would be is the 4th, and the latest it would be is the 9th of January.
Fourth and the 9th. Okay.
Yeah. The 9th seems to me a little late, but the 4th seems, you know, far enough away from the holidays that you could get a, you know, cheap fare back after the...
Yeah. I mean, again, this is not about any particular individual, but making sure that all members are treated equally. And I am a bit concerned that we had agreement, and we had members-elect that were there, and we'd asked for comments back to them, since it could directly affect, you know, their abilities. So, this language I'm fine with, but, you know, we have members coming on who haven't had a chance to see this.
Too bad.
So, I'm fine with it.
So, does somebody need to move your language into the TR 13-38, or? I would so move to adopt TR 13-38, amend it at line 109 to say, "on the first Monday after the first Friday in January."
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about this before I open this up? I'd like to open this item up for discussion. This is on TR 13-38. Any members of the public that wish to comment on this? Not seeing any, and I don't believe that we received any written comments. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close this item up for public comment. And I would just ask that we let the incumbents know this, is the change that was made before it gets filed, just in case there's an issue that they see in respect to their views on this, given that we had discussed this at the last work session.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is it they're gonna tell you that's gonna change this, and when are we gonna have to vote on it?
Hopefully, we won't.
Well, there is an issue, that if they did have a problem, what would we do with it? Because this needs to be submitted.
Then there's nothing we can do. But again, this council's why I thought we had settled this during the work session, but if it needs to be revisited tonight, that's fine. If I can have the roll call, please?
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes.
And again, if we can just get the word out to the council members a lot, so they know that that change was made. And again, before the next item is read, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself for the reasons that I had previously stated, given as a prudential matter, that there possibly could be a conflict in the future with my employer during the day. But again, it's purely as a prudential issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will recuse myself from this item for the reasons previously stated, conflict of interest, or potential conflict of interest between what I do on the job and this particular issue before the city council. Thank you.
So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and pass the gavel to Mr. Pepe.
Okay. We're back to the resolution, clearing the position of the Falls Church City Council, the corporation should not receive legal rights as natural persons, and so on. First up, do we take public comment? If there's any more? Did anyone else have anything else to say? Okay. We didn't have a presentation on this one either, I take it? Or did we? No?
Just defer.
Well, I need a motion. Mr. Kalen?
I move to defer TR 13-39 to December 9.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Do we take a roll call, or?
Do we have to do a roll call for a defer?
Procedural, no.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the deferral carries. It's deferred.
And two recusals.
And two recusals. Okay, we'll turn it back to... Okay, we'll turn it back to Mayor Brug.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe. We are on to the next item. Ron, if you could go ahead and read the next item, please.
TR-13-30 is an ordinance to align the real estate tax year with the fiscal year.
Mayor Brug, members of council, this item is technical in nature, but it has important implications. Currently, the city's fiscal year and tax year are out of syncs with each other by six months, and as a consequence, when the council adopts the budget and a tax rate to fund that budget, the revenue from real estate now that's driven by both the assessed value and the tax rate is not known for the second half of the year. As a consequence, we frequently run either surpluses or deficits when, over the course of the subsequent 12 months, our forecast, the actuals may differ from what our forecast is. So, there is a way to correct for this. A number of cities across the Commonwealth have taken action to align their fiscal year and their tax year along the lines that's similar to the ordinance that's before the council. When the council discussed this at work session, one question was, when should, if we were to take this step forward, when should it be effective? And what the recommendation is, is that this would be effective next year, next January 1st, 2015, and that would allow us to adopt a budget this coming, this coming spring that would incorporate this new way of doing business with greater certainty in our real estate tax revenues. And so, that is the recommendation. The alternative for the council to consider is to simply maintain the status quo and table this ordinance. And it is, you know, worth noting that the majority of localities in Virginia operate the way that we do now, but there are a smaller number that have taken this action to provide more certainty in our real estate revenues, and that is recommended for the council tonight. Richard LaConde and I are happy to answer any questions about this item.
Council, any questions before we take up a motion? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I have several questions. First of all, do you recommend, I'm going to ask city management, including the CFO, if you recommend we make this change?
Let me ask Mr. LaConde to answer the question as well.
Happy Monday, Mr. LaConde.
Happy Monday, council.
I'll let him answer, and I'll offer my recommendation as well.
There is no real benefit other than the improvement in accuracy.
I'm sorry, improvement in?
Accuracy in the real estate tax revenue. If that is the desire of council, we can do that. However, what you've also done is narrowed your margin for error in your other revenues, so that should be taken into consideration.
And I would add to that, I think that the consequence, this is a practical matter. Here we are, we're trying to forecast what real estate assessed value is going to be right now, we're trying to forecast what that's going to be 18 months from now, and that's hard to do. And so, in 2009, 2010, and 2010, 2011, I believe in 2007 as well, we were wrong in each of those years, we were overly optimistic. And so, we went through this process, the council will recall it, remember the mid-year budget corrections that the council did by resolution? Not a good exercise. So, that's what this will avoid. Now, we still will have some variance on our sales tax forecast, or meals tax forecast, that all comes up to about 25% of our total revenues. But in terms of the big one, real estate is the big one, and it's driven by assessed value, which we don't know is what it's going to do many months from now. And then on the upside, there are years when we're overly conservative in our forecast, and so, we come, go through the process, and revenues come in ahead of what we forecast, and we get a surplus. And that is important. We program that surplus for pay-as-you-go capital improvements in the city, so they're used for good public purposes. But, you know, when you have those surpluses, you have to explain them to the public, and sometimes there's criticism for them. So, those are the consequences of the status quo, and I think greater certainty would take care of both of them.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just follow up with a couple more questions, and then, under this, do the taxpayers hold on to their money longer? That question came up. It's the same, ultimately have to have a rate that gets you what you need in order to fund the budget, but my understanding from the work session was that this allows taxpayers to hold on to their money longer. Is that true?
Yeah, that's exactly what it does. It defers the implementation of the assessed value, which is effective January 1st still, but it won't be applied until July 1st. And so, if there's a bump up in your assessed value, you won't pay that until six months later than you otherwise would. So, that's a benefit to the taxpayer. Conversely, if assessed values are dropping, a higher assessed value will apply to your property for six months longer.
Okay. I think that answers my questions for now. Now, the first year that we put this into effect, what's the, what's the effect on the budget?
So, on Thursday, a week ago, we presented a forecast to the city council of 3.8% growth in revenues. Embedded in that forecast was an assumption of assessed value growing by 1.5% June, 18 months from now. If we were to just do, if we were to adopt this ordinance, that means that that June is going to be flat compared to what it is effective January 1 of 2014. So, we won't get that 1.5% bump. It'll be pushed out six months later, and it'll be applied after July 1st. So, that's one thing that we'll just wrestle with. You know, our forecast, which is already insufficient for the needs that have been articulated, so, you know, we'll have a bigger gap that we'll need to close in that FY15 budget development. One thing that I will note, however, is that we are, having gone through that process that I described earlier, of having to do mid-year budget corrections, that's a painful process, and so, we as, just naturally, as any forecaster will do, tend to be careful in that forecast, given the fact that it's 18 months from now. If we know fully what the tax rate is going to be, and the assessed value is going to be for a full fiscal year, then that tendency to be conservative on that forecast will no longer be an issue. And so, that could mean that as we're, in normal economic times, when I say normal, most years in the city of Falls Church, assessed values grow, but we'll be able to encompass that in a very rational way into our budget planning process, because it will be a known quantity, as opposed to a guess that we're not very confident in.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Kalin?
Thank you. I think this is a good idea. Part of it is the, is just the civic culture of Falls Church, in which, over time, if you have a surplus, you've mismanaged your analysis. There's not many places that see a surplus as a bad thing, but we have managed to do that here in Falls Church. This would avoid the swings, yes, you would have the issue of the 30% that in fact may vary from the projections, and therefore, there would have to be some buffer included inside of that budget that would allow for, you know, a plus or minus 5%, or plus or minus 10%, whatever you want to do, depending on the statistic analysis of how much it varies to that portion. But it would avoid the issue, to be more explicit, Wyatt, of saying, "We have a surplus, let's give it back to the taxpayers," when in fact, it's money we need, and then trying to explain that it's not free money becomes very difficult, and that's now part of our civic culture. So, I think the reality of that is going to make this, well, you know, this council, Dave, Nader, Phil, it's going to make it easier for you to actually deal with the budget discussion vis-à-vis that. In terms of overly, you know, conservative, I'm very nervous about those terms, Wyatt, because no one could predict irrational exuberance, so you can't say one was, you know, overly conservative if, if the market is bubbling and frothing all over the place. There's no way to deal with that, and it goes up and down that way as well. It's very hard to try to pinpoint that, that projection. The point would be that you would be able to know with some certainty that the largest single budget driver has been addressed. Now, as regards that mid-year adjustment, I think you sort of understated the damage that that, the 17 FTE reduction, in which people got notice in April that they'd have to find a new job in June. I have to tell you, I was appalled that we had, we're in a situation where people's, a lot of, I don't know how many people it turned out to be, because some people made half-time or part-time and then had to quit because it wasn't enough money. I don't know how, what the actual fall, but most organizations can't take that type of damage and still have high morale and expect it to function for those who are left behind. It is a more than inconvenient, it is a very bad way to run a government. And that's why I think if this would help reduce that possibility, this is a very important measure. Thank you.
Just one quick question. The dates on which we pay our taxes don't change in this, do you think?
That is correct, no change.
So, they would still be paid on July and?
June and December.
I'm sorry, June and December.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just note that the ordinance was drafted by the city assessor, so this was, you know, worked through in a way that he believes is administratively feasible.
Doing it this year, is that right, Mr. Shields? That was the question that I had.
Yes, so that it becomes effective January 2015, so we build our budget this coming spring, knowing that this is going to be implemented.
And for the benefit of other council members who were not at the school board council liaison meeting that occurred just before this meeting, I did raise that this was on the agenda for discussion, and depending on whether or not it passed, it would have an impact on this year's budget as we move forward. But there's really no substantive discussion, other than letting the school board chair and vice chair know that this was coming up.
The effective date is to your satisfaction? We talked about this at the work session, this...
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to jump into comments, I'm happy to let my fellow council members and the public know where I am on this. I'm definitely in support of this. My issue is one of timing and when we implement, and as far as the merits of what we're trying to do, I think myself and Budget and Finance Committee and the rest of the council have been trying to look at ways of really improving our fiscal health in the city. And one of the ways that I think we do that is by having credibility with our numbers, and that's not to say that our numbers were not accurate, but it goes in part to the whole communication piece. They're part and parcel. For some reason, despite best efforts, the message hasn't gotten through. I know that on one occasion, I tried to, through questioning, tried to really discuss what the surplus meant, that it actually was money is allocated, and the press kind of challenged that, that I was actually trying to sway the numbers, and in fact, there was a budget, and we had to do a press release. All that takes time, and it erodes public confidence, one way or the other. So, I think having accurate numbers that, that we can rely on in our budgeting sort of follows the direction that the council's been going as far as multi-year budgeting, looking at the long-term horizon. Having these variances on our largest revenue makes that very difficult to do when we're forecasting that far out. So, bringing that more in line, I think is really important. I do share Mr. LaConde's comment, that it does put more pressure on the other items, because there could be sways there. I believe you suggested that the sways could be maybe $100,000 on each line item or so. I think that's manageable.
I just built it above.
So, you build in some cushions there in the budget, and you work within those parameters. And Mr. LaConde, I hear where you're coming from, but puts a little bit more pressure on you to try to look at, look at the trends, and I know that puts a little sharper point on, on those line items, but I think we all understand that, and, you know, we know that that's going to be challenging, and that puts a little bit of a laser pointer...
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
On that, so, just, just to be fair, you know, I, we do acknowledge that. So, I do support it. I think this really gets us in the direction that we've been trying to go with our forecasting models, and puts a little bit more accuracy and predictability. And fundamentally, you know, as I mentioned during the work session, this notion that we were utilizing surpluses, or true surpluses, to fund PEGO, those were one-year offs. We simply can't do that anymore with our capital improvement program and what we're trying to accomplish. So, I think we have to be very disciplined on how we handle that, and having more accuracy and not relying on surpluses to accomplish PEGO is really, really important if we're going to try to meet the capital program challenges that we have. So, I see this culmination of things that we've been trying to do, and still more work needs to be done, but I'm fully supportive of the merits of this. As far as Mr. Duncan, your question about timing, Mike, I wanted to do this sooner than later, and that's why I posed the question, is it technically feasible and functionally feasible for the organization to do it during this budget cycle? And I'm, I'm hearing that that is, and it's been run through the assessor's office, so that addresses my question. So, sooner than later, as long as it's doable, which it is, is better. So, I'm all in favor.
Thank you. I agree with all your comments, and appreciate you for bringing this forward.
I will say, I agree with the comments, and frankly, while the current system, there's nothing inherently evil with the way it's done, it introduces an element of confusion that you then spend most of your time defending the confusion and putting down the conspiracy theory versus dealing with the facts of, do we need PEGO funding, and do we need this, and do we need that? So, I think what this does is it forces a greater degree of discipline all around, and you have to plan and build in and pay for these things, if you really want to get it done. It's either going to be up or down, they get funded, or they don't. It eliminates this possibility of what people seem to think is a sneaky way to raise taxes mid-years, the way a lot of people look at it. My guess is, it's going to end up resulting in more spending, but as Nader just said, on some of the things we've been trying to do, and then get cut back in this fog of what's a surplus and what's not, so that's why I'm going to support it.
Other members of council? And I think just for the public's benefit, if this does end up getting approved, I think it's really important, as we begin the budget discussions that are in the very early, early stages, we don't even have budget guidance out, that the numbers that we get as we move forward for this year, once the assessment is done, is going to be the bulk of the number. So, as we build the budget, it's going to be on that number. The only variance potentially could be what we're seeing on the other items, which is a very small portion of our revenue. So, it is what it's going to be, and there's not going to be hopes that things are dramatically going to go one way or the other. So, as we move forward in the discussions and we're building the budget guidance, I think there has to be a realization of that, that it's going to be different than the process that we were familiar with in the past, where Mr. LaConde came forward and we were all debating whether the projections eight months out, or 18 months out, are accurate or not. That's just not going to be the case, I think. Does that simply put it, Richard?
Yes, it does.
So, Mr. Kalin?
Just to make it even a little easier, the other items are like four or five other revenue streams. Since they're divided up, and they're not exactly necessarily very correlated, you actually get diversity, so the likelihood that the whole thing goes down or goes up is a little less, because there, there's a different set of drivers.
Well, certainly, if you keep buying new cars, that'll help.
Well, certainly, if you keep buying new cars, that'll help.
(laugh) I've done my part this year.
For example.
All right, other council members? All right, if I can get a motion, then we'll open this up for public discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve TR-13 dash thirty on first reading schedule, second reading and public hearing for December ninth, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
If I can get a second, please.
Second.
It's Mr. Callan on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public discussion, any discussion, um, I, I don't have any speaker slips. Uh, did we get any written comments on this? I'm gonna go ahead and close this item up for public comment. Um, any further council comments? Veronica, if you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callan?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, council.
And if I may, if I can just thank my colleagues, I know that I had proposed this some time ago, and, um, there was a bit of, uh, reluctance, shall I say. Um, I'm glad that we got there incrementally with the charter change and now this. So, it's a bit of an experiment, we'll see how it goes during this budget cycle, but my hope is that, um, that, uh, it goes well and provides a little bit more accuracy, um, and confidence in our numbers. And, um, if I can also just make a request of staff, um, and also my fellow council members, I think, um, we're gonna need to educate, um, everybody involved in the budget process, that it's gonna be a little bit different this time, um, with, with this change, and what it means, um, because folks may be familiar with our previous budget processes, and, and I think we're gonna need to do some educating, and we have the opportunity to do that, since there's new school board members elects, and, and council member elects coming in to the process. Mr. Mayor Snyder?
Let, let me just say that I voted for this because I hope that it will improve accuracy, and will allow taxpayers to hold on to their own money longer, but if there are unintended consequences that occur, it's something that we should revisit if those consequences are negative toward the public.
Absolutely. So, so I hope, uh, other council members are supportive of doing the educational process of, of budgeting right now, and asking Mr. Shields to, uh, work on that, um, as soon as possible, working with, uh, the superintendent. So, all right, thank you very much.
TR-13 dash forty is a resolution for irrevocable election not to participate in Virginia Local Disability Program.
Shields?
Uh, council, this is an item, uh, that affects future hires of our constitutional offices, specifically the treasurer and, and Commissioner of Revenue, um, and it allows the city to opt out of the VRS program to provide a long-term disability retirement benefit for those future hirees. And instead, we will go with the VML voc- VACO plan, which is, uh, we believe more cost-effective.
Any questions, council members? If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up.
Move to approve, move to adopt TR-13 dash forty?
Thank you. That's Mr. Callan on the second. I'm gonna go ahead and open this item up for public, um, discussion. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, Veronica, did we receive any written comments? I'd go ahead and close this item up for public comment. Um, anything further by council members before we take our roll call? Veronica, if you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callan?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes.
And I'd just like to clarify one point on the tax ordinance, um, in the fiscal year. Um, there is time between first and second reading, so that, that's when the public engagement should happen, and, and the education. I didn't, I, I didn't mean to say that it's, it's done, um, but the discussions need to happen, um, between now and then, and the educational process needs to happen, so people understand what we're doing and can provide any feedback. So, again, that was not intended to, um, indicate that it's FAIA complete, but beginning to educate folks on what this means.
You know, can I just ask the clerk quickly, did we have a vote on the alignment of the tax reform? We did, I, I beg your pardon. Okay, thank you.
It's getting late, boy.
All right, we are on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Duncan, do we move adoption, approve?
I think Ron should do that, 'cause he's the master.
We'll, we'll have Ron move it, but if you wanna provide a report on the appointments.
Okay.
He knows that line of real rule. The consent stuff.
No, we're waiting for a report first.
On the consent agenda, appointments of three individuals, uh, standing in for Ms. Berry, who is on business travel, as a member of the appointments committee, Charles Anderson to the Architectural Advisory Board, um, dates as stated there. Uh, reappointment of Barry Bouchaud to the Economic Development Authority, and reappointment of Lenny Hykenberry to the Planning Commission. Enjoyed speaking with these three people who are gonna be appointed, and all the others who applied, all of whom are eminently well-qualified, and, uh, it's just too bad we can't put everybody who comes before us on these positions, but, uh, the appointments committee does recommend, uh, the three names before you.
Thank you. If I can get a motion on the consent, please.
I'd like to move the adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. If I can have the roll call on consent, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callan?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes, and thank you to, um, all those individuals who applied and, um, were also appointed. So, and thanks for all your service.
We don't have any business on the agenda, we're on to council member comments.
Mr. Duncan? Perhaps someone else will say something, but as I read the schedule notices, this is Mr. Pepe's final meeting in chambers as a member of the city council. Right. I just wanted to take, this is our opportunity in chambers to thank him for his many years of dedicated service to the city, and say what a privilege it's been to serve with him, just the facts, ma'am, like the no-nonsense, uh, manner, and, uh, really been a, a great guide, uh, for me personally, and, uh, has done a tremendous amount of work for our schools and our city. And I, I will not say we will miss him, because we will expect him to continue to be involved, and hope he will be involved in the community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Snyder?
I too would join, uh, council member, um, Duncan, in, uh, expressing my appreciation for the public service of, uh, Ron Pepe, who has, uh, done so much for us, both on the school board and city council. And then one other point, you have a letter in front of you at the dais, and, uh, it was discussed, uh, during the legislative program, and if there are no objections, I plan on sending this to the Secretary of Transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Callan?
Not to bring it down to too much minutia, maybe this was covered before, and I'm the one whose memory is going, but did we have a pros- where does this issue of the proceeds of the sale, where is it discussed again, when does it get voted on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
The, um, I think one thing we could discuss for the councils, you know, whether we want to, I, I think it should be on the agenda for December second, uh, for a discussion, and if there are any special meetings that need to be had, um, we can schedule those as well, um, or continue to work through the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, but we have gotten a report back from, uh, Davenport, just running some of the various scenarios that we've asked for that came out of the Budget and Finance Committee, and so I'd like to communicate those out, and, uh, and continue that discussion.
Mr. Callan?
I think, I think it's important, because once the sale is completed and we get the proceeds, you do not wanna have them sitting around, undesignated, trying to figure out what to do with them. So, it's very important to, to have a, you know, to have that settled, I think, you know, so when the money comes into the city, we know what we wanna do with it.
Other council members?
Yeah, as I recall, there was a significant discussion of a lot of questions and a lot of procedural matters during the Economic Development Committee meeting some, several weeks ago. So, um, there are a significant number of questions, and a significant number of issues that have to be addressed, not least of which is that, both a legal matter and, and a financial matter, as to whether there would be any challenge to doing this one proposal, what are the other options, and where do we put the money in the intermediate peri- in the intermediate, uh, period until, uh, policies are made, if that, uh, becomes, um, essential. And finally, how we lockbox, in essence, if you went with pre-funding the pension, or funding the pension at a high level, and you were counting on that to generate a certain amount of, of, um, of revenue, then how do you lockbox that revenue and prevent it from just simply being used on, for operational costs, uh, in the future? So, these were some of the questions which I think we're gonna be asked about. If the objective is to convert the revenue from the sale of the water system to a hard, a similarly hard asset, what's the best way to do that? And, and the one option is to go by way of pre-funding or funding the pension system, if you will, but it, there are some questions about that approach. So, um, I, I just, the, the only point I'm making is that, that I'm interested in seeing the, the answers to all of those questions. Thank you.
Mr. Callan?
Yeah, those are all reasonable questions. I think, just to reiterate, a couple of them have sort of been addressed. As to terms of the pension fund, it's, it still has unfunded balances, so this is not gonna, this transfer will not put it over a hundred percent. So, we're still catching up, which is expected from, uh, wait, though I will say the city's pension, uh, plan has been compared to other municipalities, has been very good, and we're in much better shape than a lot of others. So, we're, we're building on that, but we're still unfunded, and we have other components that are also unfunded, uh, other than just the pension plan. So, that would be what, I think, you know, I had, before I had proposed this idea, uh, of whether, putting the money in the pension, I did check with John, and asked if it was consistent with, uh, state codes, was it legal? And he said it was, so that, that question actually has been asked and, and answered. Now, your point about, how do you make sure that the revenue that is made available is lockboxed, is a reasonable one? Um, and that could be discussed, but the financial impacts of, and I think, I hope Davenport has been able to demonstrate that, the financial impacts of not putting into the pension, where it earns six to eight percent a year, on average, compared to the next best investment, are sufficiently large that that genuine concern can be, uh, addressed, 'cause we certainly don't want the money frivolously spent. You're absolutely right about that.
So, just a matter of process, um, Mr. Shields suggested that we have, uh, this be placed on the calendar for Monday's work session on the second, for discussion, and I think that, that may be a prudent thing to do. Does that make sense? And we have gotten the Davenport's responses back. Mr. Shields, is that right?
And, and part and parcel of this is that the other options be looked at and costed
as well, from a financial and legal standpoint. So, we're not dealing with one fleshed-out alternative versus others that aren't equally fleshed out. So, we're really able to compare the financial elements of this, and how we achieve the objective of converting a hard asset to other hard assets, and not allowing even, so, there are a number of questions. The return for the investment is important, but the ability to maintain the return from that hard asset into a similarly hard asset is gonna be, I think, important, and people are gonna expect that. Thanks.
Just, just to clarify, what we're anticipating is essentially an options paper with pros and cons of the various feasible options.
What came out of the budget and finance discussion was the need to first identify what our, what our goals are. Um, and, and so I think that's, that is task number one, to have a discussion with the council and lay out, what are the big-picture goals that we're trying to accomplish with this one-time revenue, to protect the long-term, uh, financial sustainability of the city. Um, and that's really the most important discussion to have, and in order to illuminate that discussion about goals, we thought it'd be helpful to provide, um, some basic information about some of the options. In the pension, uh, using it, um, to, to invest it in the pension, use the proceeds from that investment, uh, to meet long-term goals, uh, to use it directly to, uh, reduce our debt service for our CIP, um, or to set it off as a reserve under traditional, like the, you know, the local government investment pool, and use the proceeds from that, like, uh, as an endowment, to help with long-term goals. Those are sort of the big three options. Um, and we can provide, uh, examples of, if you take our CIP and our, our cost curve to, to meet that CIP, and then take those three different approaches, and see which one provides the biggest benefit, and provides the best benefit at the end of that, uh, planning period as well. And so, those are the cases that we, we think will provide some initial information to help council have this discussion about what our, what our big goals are.
Mr. Callan?
Just, just to be clear, I mean, it's not that, that the city manager and the staff is oriented one way, I mean, all of the technical work was done by, maybe wasn't done by city, city council, so there, there are other options, but it's not that they ignored anything, 'cause they didn't, didn't prepare that part of it. This was raised with the school board just now, and, and I mentioned to, uh, Susan, that what this could do, for example, is pay for, depending how much the proceeds are and how much we put in, it could actually cover all the debt service for probably fourteen or fifteen million dollars of the nineteen million, so that you, the funds would be reduced, I mean, expenditures would be reduced, and the school board spend, school expenditures were roughly around ten million, you could then pay for that entire ten million and have it available for another school project, if you wanted, at no expense to the taxpayer. So, it, it can be channeled, I mean, I mentioned that in front, because that's the way I was thinking about it, for a capital expenditure, and that's why, uh, I've been pushing this so hard, 'cause we can do it, and then each year we can, we can borrow again, because as we run down the debt service, we replenish our borrowing capacity.
No, I, I appreciate that, but I wanna make sure that if we go this route, we in fact achieve those objectives. Um, and I would also be interested in a, in a, in a quick review of how we financed Mary Ellen Henderson, because that, if I recall, there was a reserve that was put directly into that particular school project, and that's an option that we pursued in the past. It may not compare well with this option, but I just wanna see that, so that, that can form our discussion. Thanks.
Other council members?
I think you should be comfortable, it's a good idea to make sure you're comfortable.
So, I think where this puts, again, I wanna focus in on, um, the process, so Tuesday, or I'm sorry, the second, this will be, um, placed on the calendar, um, for discussion at work session.
Yes.
Um, and let's just make sure the community, um, unless there's anything proprietary about the Davenport reports public, and the council members receive it well in advance of that meeting.
Okay. And, and one thing I'll just note, um, you know, through the agreement and through the good work of John Foster and, and his team, the net proceeds from the sale are above ten million, and they're, they, I think for the purposes of our December second discussion, we'll model fourteen million dollars in net proceeds. We think that still is, you know, potentially a, a conservative number, it's gonna be a little bit higher than that, but I think probably for our modeling numbers, uh, that's, that's what we will use. And, um, um, so I wanted the council to be aware of that. And then secondly, one key piece of the analysis, though, that we're gonna need more work on after December second, is to engage with our actuaries on the logistics of how it works in the pension fund. We have an idea of how that's supposed to happen conceptually, but we need to bring the pros in to help us with that. We have a new actuary, we put it out to bid through the retirement board, we've got, um, a new firm, uh, Chiron, who will be doing this work for us. They are right now crunching all of our numbers just to understand our, their, their basic plan and our police plan, and so getting them to do this additional analysis on top of just getting up to speed is, um, is a step we're gonna not be ready for by December second, but I think we have, conceptually, the way it's supposed to work.
Mr. Callan?
I think why you need to be a little careful, because Connie Ringberg is a professional actuary, so... actuary, so to say that you want to have the actuaries look at it is fair enough, but that's why her view is important, because that's what she does for a living. So if she said the math works, at least it's not starting from scratch. If the head of the retirement board said this didn't work actuarially, I wouldn't bother even presenting it to the city council. So I don't think there's a lot of risk, but yes, you know, you should follow up with them to make sure, but I think it's a low risk given all the time. This was, I presented this first over a year and a half ago, so this is not a new proposal. People had a lot of time, and I've been continually checking to see if anything has changed on the analysis, and it's still basically the same. The numbers changed somewhat.
So as far as Monday, again, the goal is to set the goals of how the proceeds should be used with looking at some examples of what the options are, and then distilling those options further and examining those options and making sure that's prudent. That's sort of where we're headed, and I think it's really important for us to take a look at the options. I think one, sound one based on what we know has been put forward, but I think we've got a responsibility to examine it, understand the risks associated with it, double-check to make sure the numbers work, and then look at all the other options at this point.
Well, and I was going to say, since I'll be here for the Monday discussion, there is a legal component of this as well, and there's a reason why you have to have the official city actuary weigh in on what the pension plan needs or doesn't need. That's what you have to go by for that, and I understand the desire to obtain a better return, but there's a reason we have elections every two years, and it's because if people want to spend their money on different things, they spend their money on different things, and there's reasons you can't enter into contracts that bind future councils unless you go through a debt issuance process or certain steps. You can't just routinely bind future councils. So I think we have to think very carefully, while it may be prudent and it may look like a good deal, that people may say, well, gee, I want to do something different with that money, or I don't want to tie it up, or maybe you're not allowed to tie it up under those parameters. So I think we have to keep that in mind, looking at this. I know everybody seems to think we have the best ideas now, and we know, but public sentiment may change, and they may have other ideas that completely differ, and they may have a different view of reality.
Ron, that's true, but the point is, is what Dave Snyder was saying, want it, to the extent possible, precisely lockboxed, so it doesn't, the equity remains in equity.
Yeah, it's a political question about, do you think the people have a right to weigh in and decide how we spend their money? I mean, that's what it comes down to, and how often do they get to exercise that right? And who has a right, sitting here, to say, I'm going to bind the city finances for the next so many years? That's why you have to go through elections when you issue debt, because it's one of those things that binds. That's why cities can't enter into multi-year contracts without those kind of approvals. It's for political reasons, and so I just don't want us to lose sight of that, that that's what we're elected to do.
That's fair enough, but I think the stakes are very high. We're not going to get another $14 million in equity in the near future from anything. So subtracting out the schools, the land, this is, for me, a one-time shot to get the maximum for all the future generations of foster citizens, not just the ones that are around now. This is forever.
Some more to come on that discussion Monday and as we move forward.
Are you going to be here on the next one?
And just, Ron, I do want to take a moment since this is your last formal regular council meeting with us.
Yeah, unfortunately, the 8th, I've got a mediation, a court-ordered mediation, I've got to be in Pittsburgh.
Are you going to be at the function that we're having?
No, because I've got to be in Pittsburgh at 9:00 AM for a court.
Okay. And I don't know if I'm ready for another goodbye or farewell, but Ron, it's been an absolute pleasure, being your colleague for the last several years and working through very, very difficult issues. You've been a tremendous asset to the community and really on this council, and a voice of reason, and very even-tempered, and it's just been, it's been great working with you, and especially your insight on some of the water issues as well. So thank you, Ron, for your service to the community and your leadership in the city. So I look forward to working with you in future endeavors, which I hope you'll continue to be engaged. Anything else, council members? And as I reported earlier, the budget, or I'm sorry, the liaison, school board, council liaison group met, talked about a couple of issues, we've already covered them, and also there were some minor changes made to the budget calendar that will go around as well, just mostly reports of where things are headed. The other big item is working through a process to handle school capital improvement program and how that should be handled, and the notion that was put forward is a small working group to lay out what the outline would be, not looking at choices, but just laying out what the process and brainstorming about what that process would look like, dealing with the new properties and areas of the city coming in.
Weather update, Paul, you've been out of it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before you branch out, I just wanted to thank the staff for putting together the program Thursday night when the community center was named after. Kenneth Burnett, it was a nice little program, and nice remarks were made by Danny Schlitt and Charlie O'Hara and Barry Bouchau, and it was a nice community event. Mr. Burnett gave some remarks, it was a good Old Falls Church event, so thanks to the staff for putting that together.
Mr. Shields, anything on the weather?
Well, it's a forecast for freezing rain between 4:00 and 6:00 AM, and then turning to all rain. We're going to get a lot of rain tomorrow, two inches of rain.
I think the US federal employees can tell it to me.
We will have air crews up early and do treatment, and I think that's going to be the case pretty much around the region. But again, it's a pretty short window of the frozen stuff and then a real wet day after that, and then at the end, on the back end of it, there might be snow to finish it up, but that won't accumulate much.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Just, everybody be careful as you're headed out.
Staff included?
Staff included, so everybody included in that. And just to, as a prudential matter, since we had folks from the CDC here, is that previously disclosed? My daughter's now enrolled at the Child Development Center, but there was nothing before the council tonight on that, but I felt that it would be prudent for me to disclose that.
Thank you.
Before you know it, she'll be graduating from high school, we'll have to.
You're gone. You're gone.
And then to, we had some written comments about the Rushmark Project, and again, is that previously disclosed, it's a prudential matter, I own property 243 country, but given the matters that I've disclosed before, I can consider them fairly and objectively. So, all right, anything else by council members? We didn't have any minutes, unless there's anything else, if I can get a motion.
I think Mr. Pepe should give the final move to adjourn.
I'd like to move adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, word adjourned. Thank you.